We're gonna go on the record. Okay, good morning, everyone. Today is Monday, October 18th, 2021. This, we are on the record. This is a ad hoc committee meeting to investigate Suez Water. You got it scheduled 11:00 AM start. The clock on my computer is showing 11:02. But before we do that, in efforts to adhere to social distancing protocols and best practices imposed by the city and state authorities, the city of Jersey City has canceled all public meetings and closed non-essential services as of March 16th, 2020, until further notice. As a result, this ad hoc committee meeting will be held virtually as a video conference with public access. And again, we had a scheduled 11:00 AM start. The clock on my computer was showing 11:02. I have a roll call for the commencement of this ad hoc committee meeting. Councilperson Prandery.
Here.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Yeah.
Councilperson Solomon.
Here.
Councilperson Lavaro.
Sean, I'm gonna have to disconnect and then plug back in because I'm frozen, but I care.
Very good. Councilperson Rivera is not here. And Council President Waterman.
Here.
Sorry. So we have five council members present at 11:02 AM. On behalf of Council President Waterman in accordance with New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the posting on the bulletin board of the first floor of City Hall, which is the schedule of this meeting. And in addition, at the time of its preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Friday. Excuse me, that wasn't on Friday. I apologize, on Wednesday, October 13th, 2021, at 1:00 PM to the municipal council, mayor, business administrator, corporation council, and the local newspapers, and posted on the city's website so I can certify as to total compliance with the Sunshine Law. This ad hoc committee was established by Resolution Number 21-688 on September 22nd, 2021. So I am now gonna turn it over to the council president, as I normally do, and then she can turn it over to whoever she feels fit. And Council President?
Good morning, everyone. It's good to see everyone on this Monday morning. But yeah, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilman Solomon and from, because he is the chair, and we'll follow his lead. I know this is a passion of him and Laura, so we want to make sure we give them the support that they need and let them know we're 100% behind them. So Councilman Solomon, take the lead.
Thank you, Council President. And did everyone see the agenda? We got sent out. I just wanna make sure everyone has seen it.
You also have the ability, Councilperson Solomon, to bring it up, just in case we need to defer to it.
Sure, let me, let me try to load that up. Just give me one sec.
I actually have Amanda. I can, I can have Amanda. Amanda, if you would be so kind.
Thank you. So we have the, just starting with the objective to review failed systems in previous natural disasters in the last two years from Suez and MUA, and have the committee come up with and agree with a concrete list of shortcomings and current legislation and procedure, and then understanding of the recurring problems and proposed solutions to them. And then for the agenda, wanted to just go through an introduction, which we're sort of doing now. Then, number two is the overview. And that was basically us discussing, each of us, what our issues were from both this blast thing with Hurricane Ida, but also before. And we can just start taking notes and start creating a whole list of everything that we heard, both personally as council people, but then, you know, what our constituents have reported to us as well. And yeah, have everyone have a chance to sort of provide all of their feedback on that. And then that's sort of Agenda Item 2 and 3. I think we can kind of probably do those together as combination of things. And then Agenda Item 4 is for us to then come up with a list of our goals and what we think the sort of schedule of meetings will be moving forward. So we can basically have our, our plan and approach and timeline for all of this. So the goal really here is to walk out of the meeting with, one is the full list of everything that we're concerned about, what our goals are to try to resolve those concerns, and then, you know, a sort of tentative schedule for the committee so we have a sense and a clear end date on this as well. Any, does anyone have any questions on the agenda or things that they want to add or consider amending to the agenda?
No, no, I'm, I'm good. I'm clear.
Who is it that's gonna be saying the $35? Like, like?
Oh, Bernadette, I think you're off, not muted. Alrighty, Rolando. You're good. Rolando, Mir, Rich, you guys have any agenda items you'd add or wanna change?
I'll wait, I'll wait. I have some points I wanna bring up. I'll wait.
Okay, great. So then, let's just go to Agenda Item 2. So I can start with my couple concerns that I've seen, and then we'll basically turn it over to each of the four council folks and give everyone a chance. And I think we can combine 2 and 3 here and basically list your personal concerns and then as well as anything you heard from your constituents. So I think for me, a couple just things. Going back to the Ecoli a year ago, a year and a half ago now, a year, a couple months, there were a couple things that were concerning to me. The first is just our emergency communications approach. Make sure that people hear that there's a boil water advisory or other form of important communication. And I think with Suez, you know, they're focused on the ratepayers, so the people who are homeowners or property owners, but that leaves out both residential and commercial tenants. And so how do we make sure as many people as possible get these notices as quickly as possible? And I think there's some ideas that we have out there that we can look into. But I really just think, you know, emergency communications from Suez and then having that obviously be coordinated with OEM and MUA, I think is just really, really important. And I, you know, my experience was that lots of people, especially the, for the Ecoli, but also during Ida, you know, didn't hear about these notifications in the, in as timely a manner as we would have liked. So that, that's sort of a key piece for me, for us to resolve. I think second is then internal communications with us as the council, with, and you know, OEM, Suez, and MUA. And I think Councilwoman Prandery has mentioned before that, you know, when we were at PSCNG, we all have a direct point of contact. We don't have that right now with Suez. Really know who we're, who, who, who to go to for information? Are we going to MUA? Are we going to Suez? Are we going to? And how is the council being, you know, as sort of the, you know, we're, we're getting all of the input from the constituents. How are we being briefed on all of this? So we can get accurate information out to the, to the community and then convey information back to folks. And then obviously, for Ida, the water distribution, right? It was a clear, huge, huge problem of if we do ever have a, either a small scale or a large scale boil water advisory, what are our plans in place to make sure that, that people can get access to water? You know, how are they, how are we making sure that, that we have plans in place? And I know that was a, you know, kind of a, you know, Suez, I think, sounds like they overpromised and underdelivered, and then, you know, a bunch of different government and entities stepped in to try to figure things out on that front. So those are, those are kind of three big things for me at the top to list. But then why don't I pause here and then let everybody else kind of share what their items are? Rich, you wanna go first? Go for it.
Well, you talked about emergency communications. Years ago, when we had a problem, we had the police cars riding around with the loudspeakers on, notifying each and every community throughout the city. And I think we should go back to that. That's one of the greatest forms of communications. People hear it. They see the police car riding down the block going very slow, announcing there's a, a water problem, boiling water. I think we should go back to that. That should be one step we should follow. And secondly, you know, the use of the internet and Facebook and everything else. But that was a very effective way of notifying people throughout the entire city. And I think we should go back to that.
I mean, I, we will, we're gonna list all this stuff. So we'll have the notes and everything. But I mean, I agree. I think it's, it's low tech, but it's, it's, it's a really good way for people to hear, right? And then, then spread. So, right. Rich, are there other, you want more broadly like, what did you hear both during Ida and then the other boil water advisories from your constituents? You know, what were the concerns that you heard from, from them during that time?
Well, mostly, I, I'll tell you the truth. People were quite happy. We had a lot of water up by the county courthouse. People were coming. We went through, I think, three or four truckloads of water, and people were quite happy with it. And they also had a barrel there where you can pump water into a container and stuff. But the problem with Suez is people have to be notified right away that there's a problem. And like I said, the fastest and easiest way is through the police and the various forms of communication we have today in the internet and everything. But otherwise, that's about it for me.
Sure.
Well, you know, let me, let me just jump in. For me, I heard a lot of miscommunication. A lot of people were not aware even that there was a water advisory out there for some time. Then they heard about it, you know? And at the time, it, it made them more frightened because, you know, they said, "Well, I've been drinking this water, and I haven't heard." You know what I'm saying? And so for me, it was the communication. A lot of people have, did not hear about the water advisory. And then after that, the communication to distribute water, that was not, you know, communicated well at all. You know, how, you know, what they distributed. People were very upset because some of them were out there without buckets. They, they thought it was just bottled water. It was a mess far as their communication. So for me, it was communications. I heard a lot of discomfort and this, you know, displeasure with the communication from Suez or MUA. You know, I, I think the community need to understand each role from Suez to MUA. To me, it was communications. They were not happy at all.
I'll go ahead and jump in. This is Kilcoon and Prandery. Agree with everything that's already been said. Also, I wanna add that there was an incident about a year and a half ago where there was a major water main break over on the northern end of the city that affected wards B and wards A, and I think maybe a little bit of C. So this was even before the, the Ecoli issue and then Ida. And again, we had some similar problems with communication. And like, it took, it took a number of hours for the water trucks to come out. I feel like, for whatever reason, maybe because it was a smaller area, not citywide, communication did get out. But where we had issue there too was with, is like general placement of water trucks and not internally coordinating, right? So Councilwoman Ridley and I had talked about where we could put water trucks that were maybe bordering the two wards to also maximize access to people. So I think that some of that comes like from logistically coming up with a plan and identifying, you know, like, top 10 locations that are easy for people to get to, whether they're by public transit hubs or, you know, like they get a large parking lot where people can go. I would even go back to Hurricane Sandy, where they set up a power station where you could come and charge your electronics and get ice and get water all in the, in and around the light rail parking lot. So that was something that worked really well back at Sandy. I think with the communications, also I think it's great that they eventually put out bilingual, but we say this with everything that we do here in Jersey City. We need to have, in my opinion, like a translation department for the city. This is something they've also talked about with Director Flanagan. Just because of the, you know, we don't have top two language. We have like top five language. And I think that especially now, considering the way that we've diversified our police department, there's opportunity there for people that are by or multilingual to also help with communicating out. I mean, I know you wanna walk the line between, you know, communicating information and not inciting panic. But when you don't have communication, people start to take their own perception or, or what they hear on the street, and that doesn't. I'm glad to hear that they had a number of trucks up in sea. I know that wards A and B were the first to get the water buffaloes, but we were only left with two cases. We were also left with no one from Suez to help us distribute. So if I had not been there for the drop off, if someone from the MUA had not been there for the drop off, it would have been a free for all with no communication, no order, no anything. No information being communicated out to residents. Nobody's a point, as a point person saying, "We're down to our last three cases in the pallet of water. When can we expect more?" Or "How can we communicate better out to residents if they need to come with their own containers?" Because people were just showing up with carts, expecting bottled water, right? And I think that that, you know, if you don't know, if you can't guarantee, then don't say it. Have that be, you know, something that comes in addition to. Because when we had the water trucks, going back to that water main break about a year and a half ago, people knew to bring containers because they knew that that's what it was. It was a water truck where they could collect water so they wouldn't have to do the boil water advisory. Or they, actually, you know, then it was a complete shut off. So they, so they had access to water altogether. And I think that, you know, the, the, this, the, the complete lack of internal and external communication made it really difficult because you figure you have nine council people calling, you know, the same people. That takes up time. That eats away from getting protocols in place. So, you know, I even go back to the old fashioned phone tree when your neighborhood association, somebody has an issue, somebody calls down the list, and everybody gets notified. You know, we can modernize it and have a, you know, a text message tree or whatever it is that would look like. But some of those old fashioned ways of getting out communication really do end up working the best. But that's, but, but it was just like, and, and, and being told that we were gonna get more and then finding out that there was nothing to get. So having to coordinate with Health and Human Services, having to coordinate with Rethel council people, you know, I don't, like, is it possible for Suez to create a voucher system where they just, people can go into their store and go get the water that they need and then build back to Suez? That would have been a really great way to, to manage some of this, in my opinion. We were able to do it with Tropicana because the city has an account. They're a vendor of ours. So that made it very easy to move that forward. I know that Suez had also said that internally it was hard for them to get some of like, like a forklift and things like that. Well, if that's, if you know that's an issue, plan with the city or plan with the county so those things are in place so you don't have to scramble when you need them. Like, like now's our opportunity to set up a comprehensive plan and a guidebook moving forward. So that's, I'll stop there.
All right, we got all, all that. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Lavaro?
Thank you, Councilman Solomon. And so let, let me begin. I'm, I'm not going to, I'll reiterate what other people have already talked about. By and large, generally agree with most of the other suggestions and recommendations there or, or concerns that were raised. Let, let me begin with a couple of things that maybe weren't raised at this point. And I wanna go back and I think, don't think it's been mentioned yet to date. The, the presumption was that the, the water and the fact that it became contaminated in some way and requiring it to be under a boil water advisory is because it was, as a result of Ida, that there was something that caused a collapse or something that affected, if my memory serves me, that ultimately some contaminants kind of find its, found its ways into, into the, into the water supply in that sense. And then ultimately, the, the testing came out negative there or indicating that there was potential contamination. And so I believe it was 2018 that we allocated some $515 million for, for upgrades to our water and sewer systems, authorizing the MUA in that regard. And some of that money was specifically dedicated to the Butten Reservoir and our water supply for the protection of our water supply. So I think this committee, if charged to do that, could look into that to ensure what, what was done there to ensure the protection and to ensure that, and was this just simply a Hurricane Ida related? Something that was unexpected, as has been suggested? I don't think we should just take that at its word. We should look at that to see if, if the improvements were made to be able to protect our water supply and to ensure that, that we were preventing potential contamination there. And if not, then we, we should make sure that that happens. And if something else needs to be done to prevent that from, again, happening in the future as well. So that's the first thing. The second thing, and it has been said already, and I'll say it again though, because it's worth reiterating, is the notification to, to residents. I don't think enough has been talked about that at this point. And to Councilman Solomon's suggestion about a wireless alert system, emergency alert system, I think that needs to be looked upon immediately and enacted urgently because there will, there will almost certainly be another, if not natural disaster, other concern which requires a boil water advisory or some other advisory unrelated to, to water and sewer and so forth. So we need to look into adopting that system. The second, the third thing around that in terms of communication, and I'll take it from a different angle, is the idea that our communication is decentralized. And in a manner, in a time of crisis, it should be centralized. We have an Office of Emergency Management, but we hear from all three different agencies and other folks as well outside of OEM and MUA and Suez and as well as other agencies saying what they were doing around that. And, and decision-making and operations in a matter, in a time of crisis should be all centralized. And so I think we need to, in coming up with any plan in response, it should include decentralization and clarity of the lines of communication and the lines of command around that. And, and this city council, I think, should, should memorialize that into law, right? And that we should put into our, our ordinances as it pertains to kind of the, the organizational structure and how to respond to these, these crises when they emerge. And, you know, without having done all the, the research on this, I would say Office of Emergency Management is obviously the most critical place and begin there. The, the fourth thing I'll talk about is the idea of ensuring and then reiterating the idea that the council members, as well as all the rest, the necessary stakeholders are at the table when talking about the response and the notification around that. We're kind of on a need-to-know basis, the city council, and that should change for sure, right? So this goes back to as far as I've been a councilman when Hurricane Sandy hit Jersey City. And we need to take the politics out of, out of these responses because it's an emergency and it's a crisis, regardless of whether there's an election going on or not. And, and so everybody should be at the table in these matters. Same thing through COVID and everything else. And as much as possible, there should be a great deal of transparency around that to ensure that the folks are there and that ideas are being exchanged and input is being delivered, including the councilperson's input on all of those matters. The, the last point I guess I'll make is around the, the delivery of the water itself and the communications around that. Certainly, there can be better coordination. And I'll reemphasize everything else that's already been said around that in terms of how to, how to respond with that. There, there actually is one, one last point around this is that the response itself and the understanding that in fact there was, whether it was the Ecoli situation or this one, or any other boil water advisory, determining who was accountable and responsible and involved in the notification. And that goes to the point of trying to also figure out centralization of, of the chain of command there on this. But also, we need to hold people accountable. There needs to be transparency around this and accountability. We have now at least two. I believe there was a third one just in the past year, boil water advisory type situations where, where it was talked about getting the information out. And we still don't get clarity about these, these responses in terms of when information was ascertained and provided. And I believe the last time we did speak with the MUA and Suez regarding Hurricane Ida's response, that they said that they would provide a more detailed response on the timeline and, and how things broke down there with regard to who was informed and what information was disseminated to which, which parties and how it was disseminated out to the public ultimately, those notifications. We need to get that information so that we can also make better decisions about moving forward, how to centralize that chain of command and so forth. But also to hold accountable those folks who maybe did not do the work that they were supposed to do because something, someone didn't get the job done, both in Hurricane Ida and Ecoli. And there still needs to be held accountability held in both of those cases. Those are the things I'm gonna emphasize and, and I'll look forward to working with everybody moving forward to improve the system.
Great, thank you, Councilman. So if I can, you know, maybe summarize a, a potential list of goals, and obviously we can write these and, and set them down to every, send them down to everybody. You know, I think, you know, the, the first goal is to review and improve emergency communications. And then I think within that, as I say, communication is too public. And I think within that, I, I wanna put a sort of translation as part of that. We wanna put down[1493.33] the what the Councilman LaVarra said, which I talked about, which is the wireless alerts, like Amber Alerts. But I can just briefly pause for a second. I talked to Director Kierst about these after the Ecoli. I think Jersey City had applied to get the approvals to be able to send these out. But it doesn't sound like it's been approved yet. It sounds like it's been at the land, the DHS side for a long time, but working with him on understanding when we can get approvals and, you know, what what the protocols would be for sending those out. We want to talk about what Councilman Bajiano said, the, you know, kind of, I'll call them low tech means of communication, which are really important to get information and words out to everybody, so through bars and other forms. We talked about Council President was talking about was the 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 forms of communication and Councilman Prinzieri, so not, you know, making sure both people hear, but there's not panic, so that the the actual language and tone and responsibilities. And then, anything else on communications we'd want to add to the list of goals there? And I would just say that this is, I think there's three parties. Here, there's there's MUA, there's SUEZ, and then there's City of Jersey City, which obviously is OEM and. So so we'll list those three parties there. Second, I think, is is review and improve internal communications. And this gets to what Councilman LaVarra was talking about. The issues of, you know, you know, how the council looped in, what Councilman Prinzieri talked about, of, you know, all nine of us calling the same contact person. So it ends up being very inefficient for that contact person. So how do we funnel information and how do we both up and down the chain? So how is the council both getting information and sharing it and then being able to convey the information that we're experiencing? And then again, that's that's with also all three parties, MUAs, SUEZ and JC. Water distribution plans. To review and improve the water distribution plans. Talk about what Councilman Prinzieri talked about, the the water tanks. But also communications. So this will tie, I guess, into the communications too specifically. So what what is needed, you know, for when we doing water distribution? I'd like to sort of add too specifically, you know, how how does this plan vary for different types of events? You know, to experience a citywide, the councilman, you talked about a neighborhood wide one. So what are what are the what are those plans? And then Councilman LaVarra, you talked about, I'd say just I'd say, I I guess, review water infrastructure plan. So that's determining if we think the infrastructure is up to snuff, so to speak. And then the last one would be maybe just sort of, I'd call it maybe, you know, review of prior decisions. And this gets to the accountability piece. You know, what what actions were taken? Anything else?
You know, James, also, what Rolando said is true. We have to come up with some type of legislation that when there's a state of emergency, that the whole council is there. We have to. You know, we should know automatically, you know, in a state of emergency where to report to. So we need to write legislation on that. So we'll know automatically if there's something we know all, we know where to go to. You know, we'll be at the table because each ward is different. And I don't think everybody understands that. That's why every, all of us must be at that table.
Yep.
You know, years ago, we had our own water department here in Jersey City, and it was a fantastic water department. And I'll be quite honest with you, I think we should go back to having our own water department. The people running it were great and, you know, they did a great job. I also have to say Saturday night, we had a water main break up the corner from me. I called SUEZ on Saturday night about 9:30, 10 o'clock. They responded right away. I was shocked.
I guess, no, they know we're upset.
Yeah. In fact, they're now working.
Great. Any any is that working for everyone for other lists of goals? And then my thought would be, if it works for everybody, is for us to do, you know, one meeting basically at each of these goals. So I think that would end up being, it looks like five meetings. So one is would be communications. Second would be water distribution. There would be infrastructure. And then emergency, like the what you just said, legislation. And then last one might be review of all the prior incidents. So that would, I think, that's the count that is four. And then we could basically try to schedule those four out. And I was my thought was envisioning maybe two meetings in November and two in December.
Sure.
Basically, if this time works, so two Mondays, we can obviously schedule it with everybody. And then what we want to do is talk about who who we want in each meeting. And obviously, we can do some of that via email in advance, but obviously, I thought, you know, for each one, MUAs, SUEZ, Jersey City would ask the representatives from those agencies to be there at the meetings.
Okay.
Good job.
So, Solomon, just with regard to getting those parties to the table
Yep.
and having it be productive conversation
Yep.
around that. Who who will be responsible, I guess, for ensuring that those parties come prepared with information to address? So that we're not
Yeah.
kind of chasing it down, so to speak, as who was trying to get the information that was ascertained, who was responsible for this communication or that communication or not doing that communication? Or, for example, looking at past decisions, I mean, we could just look at, I believe tomorrow, there'll be a shutdown of PSCNG, for example, and this is unrelated to SUEZ. But there'll be a shutdown tomorrow of PSCNG around the Beacon. I think there'll be a power about that. And so they've done a whole series of communications, from what I understand, and that that could prove as a as a good model for kind of how to enact some of those similar shutdowns up from the the water and sewer side and so forth. Or or looking at other past incidents, so maybe not necessarily the entire Hurricane AIDA, but looking at other incidents that could be scaled up. As was discussed, maybe there were other shutdowns of water main breaks and things of that nature that can be looked at to see how those were handled as well. So so my my question is really just who's going to handle that if it's your office or somebody else's? It's a big, slightly big, it's a big task, frankly, to get get that information together and to get those parties at the table.
I'm happy to to take the lead on that and basically send a notice to all, everybody say, okay, let's say we're having the meeting in two weeks on emergency communications and ask every member of the committee in advance, what are the questions and do you want in advance of that meeting? And we can compile all of those and send those to the folks that we're we're going to invite to the meeting. And obviously, you know, they they, you know, we can't guarantee they're going to come prepared. But we can, we can take my office and take the lead on on all those and just sending those requests out. And we'll, you know, so basically, we can request from all of you two weeks in advance and then request from the people we're meeting with a week in advance. And just sort of follow that schedule. And we can lay that out in a full schedule after this for everyone sees it once we once we put the meeting dates on for everybody.
Yeah, good. That's good.
That sounds good. I guess I would suggest perhaps if it's my understanding that the mayor and the administration are fully supportive of this this process, this undertaking. And perhaps they can help by dedicating some staff who will act as a liaison to be able to work with your office, to be able to corral all of those different parties and to make sure that we get their full cooperation in this investigative process.
Sure, I can. I can ask the mayor and and chief of staff if they're willing to have one of them to serve as an adjunct to the committee, you know, the formal. But help us out and sit on all of me. Help us with the document requests.
Sure.
Alrighty, so As we're as we're starting to think about the legislative piece too, it might be helpful to have somebody from the law department as well.
I will add, Council, also, I see if you can have someone sit with us. Great, ready. So I think the follow up for us is we're going to send out in a couple of days all the notes and then a tentative schedule for December meetings with the topic of each meeting. And then the timeline, which would need feedback from all the committee members and then feedback from the invited participants. Great.
That's good. That's great.
Alrighty, great. Anything else we wanted to touch base on before we wrap up?
No, I think we got a good spot here.
Alrighty, thank you. Alright, Clerk, you want to close this out?
Thank you.
So before we before we do that, have we set a date for the next meeting?
We haven't.
Okay.
If it's okay with you, Clerk, what I'll do is set out a proposed set of times for everybody and then confirm it with everybody. And then we'll we'll get you the times, not just for the next meeting, but for the schedule. So then there can be more easily sunshine moving forward.
That would be great.
I mean, I just, I think these Mondays, Monday at 11 is great on my end, but we'll send it out.
Mine's too. Monday works best for me, too.
Okay. That that'll work. That'll be great. All right. With that being said, then, can I have a motion to adjourn at 11:38 AM?
Motion.
Motion made by Councilperson Solomon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
That second, I'm going to have to give to Councilperson Bajiano. On a motion for adjournment at 11:38 AM, all council members present by acclamation, please say aye.
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 We are out of here at 11:38 AM. Thank you so much, Council President. Councilperson Solomon, Chairperson, thank you so much. Everybody behind the scenes, all the administration that's around and everyone that was involved with making this meeting possible. Without you guys, we wouldn't be here. So teamwork makes a dream work. Stay safe. Have a great rest of the day.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Bye bye. Have a good day.
I was ready to say good night with you, Council President.
I know. Have a good day.
Okay, we are